All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let's try that again. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Fantastic. So my name is Matt Van Der Slaas. I work for Green Belt Alliance. I'm their senior field representative for the East Bay. And we're really excited to have you all here tonight on behalf of Green Belt Alliance and the other co-hosting organizations for this evening. That's Sierra Club, Save Mount Diablo, the League of Conservation Voters of the East Bay, Friends of the Vineyard, California Native Plant Society, East Bay Chapter, and the O'Leary Autumn Society. One of the biggest issues that the conservation community faces in the East Bay is the protection of Doolin Canyon. A Doolin Canyon is a rural area just east of the city of Dublin and west of the city of Livermore. It provides habitat for rare endangered species as well as ranching, providing us fresh local food. It's an area that's been protected by the voters. The voters of Alameda County put in place an urban growth boundary that protects that land. Unfortunately, developers are now pressuring the city of Dublin to annex that land to bypass these voter approvals to allow development in this area. So with the November election coming up, we knew that the residents of Dublin would want to hear from the city council candidates on this and many other pressing environmental issues. And while elected officials are barred from prejudging a project before it's come before them, they can talk about the policy issues that are at stake and the values that are at stake in these various issues. So we've decided to host tonight a free, educational, nonpartisan candidate forum, where the candidates can share their views on the various environmental issues that they would face if elected to the Dublin City Council. We've invited all six candidates, and we're very lucky that five of them have signed up to join us this evening. I want to thank all of the elected officials and former elected officials who are in the room and the city of Dublin for renting us this really tremendous space. So one or two quick housekeeping rules. Please, no clapping or making noises between or during the different things that are spoken here tonight. And we won't be able to cover every topic, so hopefully the candidates can stick around for a few minutes afterwards if you've got some burning question that you feel you didn't hear the answer to. And the restrooms are in the building just next door. So can I get a heads nod that we all agree on those rules for tonight? Fantastic, great. So please join me in welcoming our moderator for this evening, Carolyn Siegfried. She's a veteran local election candidate for moderator. We're very, very excited to have her with us. And join me in welcoming our city council candidates. So in alphabetical order, Anita Carr, Sean Castello, Kevin Hart, Jacob Hassan, and Doreen Wareham. And David Havert was not able to join us this evening. So thank you so much, and we'll turn it over to Carolyn.
Thank you, Matt. So I just wanted to explain the format for this evening. The candidates will begin by giving a two-minute opening statement each. The order that they are seated is the order that those opening statements will be given, and that was by luck by the draw of cards that determined how they are seated this evening. Then there will be a question and answer period. All of the questions were developed by the sponsoring environmental organizations, and then from that list of questions, I chose five to ask this evening. Based on our timing, there'll be time for each candidate to have an opportunity to answer first one time. The candidates will not give any of the questions in advance. And then we'll conclude with each candidate giving a one-minute closing statement, and those will be given in reverse order. And Dick will be the timekeeper in the front for the candidates. So I just want to make sure with the candidates that all of you understand that the timing for the signals, the time signals, okay? All right, so we will begin by Shehu with your opening statement.
Okay, brilliantly. Thank you very much. Shehu, I saw this, my dear. The reason why I'm keeping running is very, very simple to me, okay? We are growing. I'm growing very, very fast. I keep up this speed. I'm running mainly because I want more growth. There has to be a way for us to be able to balance the demands and the needs for developers. If you want to build, they are always trying to, every open space is a place to put something. For me, I don't really, even though we are trying, I don't see a heavy group of, trying to balance that, even though I'm trying. So I'm running mainly because of that. And also, my priority is going to be green energy. I'm more bicycle to work. I don't see the city doing that right now. More bike lanes. Also, I'm going to try to find ways, because as we grow, more people are going to move in, damage, but really adding more waste. I can just solve the waste problem. That's what I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you, Shehu. Anita, your opening statement, please.
Yes, thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you for the sponsors and for Carolyn as a moderator. And Anita Carr, I'm a 15-year resident of Dublin. I'm a current city commissioner on the Heritage and Cultural Arts Commission. The coal heritage museums and parks here are part of my work. And most people know me as being a retired business executive with Fortune 500 experience, in particular in information technologies. But I want to back it up a little bit, and date myself a bit. When I was at the University of Nevada working on my degree in biology and botany, in the '70s, I was taking ecology classes back then, environmental classes. I was fortunate enough to have the famous William Lear come and talk a couple times to our classes. And if you don't know who William Lear is, he invented the Lear jet, he invented the eight-track tapes, and he was an early developer of steam engines. And in Reno, actually, some of the earlier buses were powered by his steam engine. So he was an early inventor, trying to improve the environment for us. So I was very fortunate to hear him talk a number of times. And I am interested in city council because I think I can continue to contribute to the progress, the responsible growth in Dublin. And I like to work with the community. I'm also the state arts chairman for the California Federation of Women's Club. I'm responsible for 13,000 volunteers and the leadership in developing the arts programs, which is including music, literature, photography, and art contests for all the students in California. And I also am participating in our local women's club, Greater Federation Women's Club of Dublin and San Ramon. And I'm an officer and executive board member. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Anita. So Doreen, your opening statement.
Hello. Thank you for inviting me to participate this evening. My name is Doreen Warren Burke, and I have lived in Dublin for the past 21 years, married for 33 years, and have two grown children that attended Dublin public schools. The past eight years, I have been leading the planning commission in making recommendations to the city council on land use decisions. I'm very proud of my accomplishments of building quality, sustainable housing. We have a great variety and many types of housing and concepts that connect to shopping, restaurants, businesses, public parks, and open space hiking and biking trails. With my leadership, the planning commission has updated specific plans for the downtown area as well as adopted the green building ordinance. I support conservation of natural resources, increasing energy efficiency, and promoting healthier environments. My planning commission experience and leadership as well as my business skills of managing large, complex medical office buildings and construction has given me the skill set to be the next city council member. The city has grown successfully and is on the right track. I give credit to the city staff, current and previous council members, and mayors leading this process. I intend to work with staff to attract new businesses and maintain its fiscal and environmental responsibilities and prepare for a full buildout to 60,000 residents. We have so much opportunity in the city of Dublin and fortunate to have excellent staff and city council making good economic decisions. I want to continue working with West Dublin specific plan to bring the identity to our downtown area. I also want to work on the camp parks development as well as complete the Emerald Glen and Fallon sports parks. We have many other areas to work on, and I would like to continue that and meet our values and our, continue our economic vitality. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. Kevin, your opening statement, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Hart, and I'm seeking reelection on the Dublin City Council. Dublin remains to be the best place to live or complain in the San Francisco Bay area. For the past four years, I've had the honor of serving as your council member. If reelected, Dublin will continue to be a place where families can live safely with economic opportunities, good-paying jobs, revitalize downtown, improved quality of life, great schools, parks, and where maintained a high degree of public safety as expected. We must have results-based governance with accomplishments in the Dublin City Council. Must execute a vision for the future. We must think smart, plan our growth, and measure our progress. We must make hard choices and difficult decisions that will affect the entire city. We must protect ourselves from growing too quickly without proper resources and infrastructure. We must plan strategically with sustainable development, with thriving neighborhoods that are close to schools, parks, and other amenities. We must bring high-value employers to the city with high-paying jobs. We must continue to bring new businesses to Dublin while continuing to help existing businesses prosper. I have 34 years of law enforcement experience and eight years on the Dublin Institute as a trustee. I'm ready for reelection because I'm not done yet with the first four years. There's so much more work to be done, of which we'll probably discuss tonight, but I'm looking forward to another four years, and I ask very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Sean, your opening statement, please.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Sean Castello. That sign there tells you who I am. I stand up at Duke Park Road, but I can't. But what I can do is tell you that I've been here 28 years here in Dublin. I've been running for 28 years. Those 28 years are trying to be the best that I can be for the city. I have been on, when I first moved here to Dublin in 1984, I was approached by the city to put the ramps here in Dublin. They gave me a map. They say, "Go to it." I drove my chair all the way around the city, putting dots on the map saying I want ramps on every single corner here in Dublin. And I gave it back to them and said, "Do it." They didn't do all of it, so we still have a lot more to do. After 28 years, I still am fighting for the right for disabled and non-disabled persons alike to walk through Dublin. I'm fighting for the right for baby strollers, bikers going through the trails to be able to drive through there without a problem. I see lots and lots of things that need to be re-repaired, and I want to help repair them. As your city councilman, I want to make this a great city, and I need your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. So we'll start with the question and answer period, and the time allotment for each of your answers is two minutes as well, and you'll look to Dick for the time signals again. So the first question has to do with Doolin Canyon, as Matt mentioned earlier. So Doolin Canyon to the east of Dublin is an unincorporated area that provides habitat for rare and endangered wildlife and supports ranching and other rural uses. A proposal has been made for Dublin to annex this area and approve development of nearly 2,000 housing units. Do you favor keeping areas like Doolin Canyon in their current state, or should they be annexed for development? Shehu.
Okay, very simple. Like I said, I'm a common sense guy. I just need some money. I would say, let's keep it the way it is, okay? We can actually, is, we shouldn't be building out. I mean, my goodness, we are growing. There's still more going around us, and I think that we should try and find a different place to build it. The canyon over there is beautiful. I mean, I just don't see them doing anything yet, so I'm saying, no, let's take it without it. I'm not going to really, I'm saying, you know, just a flat, no. But right now, it's only time for us to do that.
Okay, thank you. Anita.
Yes. As a current city council commissioner, I am limited in what I can say other than the city. The city staff is in negotiations with Livermore because actually Livermore also has expanded their sphere of influence and also wants to annex Doolin Canyon. And I would be interested, and I understand that the developer would be responsible for paying for the environmental impact reports, and that has not yet even started. So I would like to reserve my opinion until I see the environmental impact report. Additionally, I understand there are some endangered species there, and I would like to probably preserve that land. However, I can't comment, it would be my own personal opinion as to whether or not I would allow developers to build there. I certainly am pro-green belt. I don't like extensive urban sprawl. And I heard mention about the urban boundary growth. It was my understanding there's only one on the west side of Dublin, and there's none yet on the east side. So I would be inclined to develop an urban boundary growth for the east side of Dublin. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Doreen.
At this point, I would think it's premature to eliminate any growth there until I actually see and read an environmental impact report through that that would naturally protect any endangered species there. And I also agree with Anita there. The city, I know, is talking to Livermore officials as well and trying to come to some sort of an agreement, and I would believe it's too premature there to just say fly out now that it's not to build there at all.
Thank you, Doreen. Kevin.
Well, I have to answer the question pretty similar to the other candidates thus far, and that is that there has been some discussion. I don't think any of the developers' proposal has been specifically identified as of yet. I think there's an interest out there. I think that there's also an interest out there to preserve. I think no one is interested in destroying any kind of habitat. Certainly, I'm not. But what does that really mean? What does the development, potential development look like? I think we're looking at at least five, 10, 15 years out at a minimum when we come to any kind of potential development. So I think at this point in time, and I appreciate the fact that Green Belt and Sierra Club were talking about it, but at this time, we're talking at a minimum, even before we even touch it for the dirt, would be 10, 15 years down the road. So I don't think that, as is already indicated, it's certainly premature, all right? So we're talking philosophical when we're talking about that. No one, so I'm not interested in disturbing the habitat, but is there room for growth on the east or eastern park side? Is there room to grow a Dublin side, a Livermore side? There's too many questions that we need to answer first before we can actually answer the questions specifically.
Thank you, Kevin. Sean.
My feeling is that over 15 years ago, when I was running for office also, everybody was saying that we have to preserve the red frogs, and we have to preserve all of these other animals that are all out there, and they often need to be protected. I really appreciate trying to protect animals also. I had an instance where I was on a Dublin boat bar, and there was a huge cloud of ducks, little tiny ducks that were out on the sidewalk, and they were going to get ran over by the traffic. And I ran my chair out in the middle of the street, and I stopped the traffic with the ducks. So that shows you that I do not want to kill wild animals either. And I cry every time I see a squirrel being run over in our streets. I want to make sure that if there is an absolute reason that we have to build on this land, that there is a serious, good reason why we have to go. We have a lot to do here now. We don't need to seriously go over there and build on both sides of our property. We have good space here to build now. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I'm going to interject with a follow-up question to that first question, and this will just order answered in the same order, and you'll have a 30-second time limit, and that is just, how familiar are you with the area of Doolin Canyon? Have you visited the area? How close have you been to ever visiting the area?
Yes, actually, I've been over there since we've been talking about it. I've been here at least six, seven times. In fact, last night, I took what I gave last night to make sure I don't miss that one I've gotten out. Yes.
Anita.
Yes, I'm very familiar with it. I've driven over there myself, and I enjoy the terrain and the, right now, it's the golden hills of Doolin Canyon. It reminds me of where I grew up in Northern California.
Doreen.
I'm not familiar with the exact area that I do drive by, you know, and familiar with the location, that's all.
Kevin.
As a young patrol officer, I used to drive the nice little blue police car out there in the valley. It's a gorgeous area. There's only probably half a dozen homes that are out there in Doolin Canyon, but that's probably the extent. And I've never been to that casino. It's on the Livermore side, by the way.
And Sean.
I've seen it on bar. I've seen it as they were building, when they were first building it. I, as you can tell, I'm in a wheelchair. I can't drive up there. I can't see it myself. I have only a certain amount of juice in my chair. I break down before I get up there to the top. But as what I saw on that hill, we really should not go any further than what the 30 houses that are there. If we put any more out there, it's going to get even more crowded, more traffic, more...
Thank you, Sean. Thank you. My next question is, Dublin has a voter-approved urban growth boundary protecting the western hills, but does not have one on the eastern edge of town. Other tri-valley cities, Pleasanton, Livermore, and San Ramon, as well as Alameda County, all have voter-approved urban growth boundaries that completely surround them. Would you support an urban growth boundary on the east side of Dublin that can only be changed by a vote of the people? If so, where do you think that urban growth boundaries should be drawn? So Anita.
Yes, I would support a voter-approved growth boundary on the east side of Dublin. As to where it should go to, I would really have to give some consideration to a map. I really would need to see the map and then go out and see exactly where that growth boundary should be.
Thank you, Anita. Doreen.
The, in order to support that currently, we are built to our city limit with green space in between the housing developments up there. And to support an urban growth boundary, I would say no at this point because of our boundary line that we have built up to and, as I said, open space involved. If we were to go any further, that's already protected space, and, as I said earlier, we would not be allowed to build anything there unless Livermore agreed to it. And that, as Kevin mentioned, is going to take quite a few years, I think, to come to fruition.
Thank you, Doreen. Kevin.
I'd be interested in exploring the opportunity, but I'm not sure what that looks like yet. I mean, there's hundreds of acres out there, so I'm not really sure what that really means. And it's not just, you know, people, when we think about Doolin Canyon, a lot of people think just about the area they see from the freeway, but Doolin Canyon goes way back, all right? So there's hundreds and hundreds of acres out there. So again, I don't know. I mean, there's the, there's the, these boroughs are parks that are out there. I'd love to see more of a trail connectivity, all right, walking trails. And I just think it's so premature not knowing exactly what that potential life would be. I'm certainly would be a thing of interest in exploring it. I would hate to see any kind of thing like that go to the voters if the city council should be able to make that decision, I would think. All right, the right decision. All right, worst-case scenario, it goes to the voters, but I think that's always on, is always on the neighbor. So I would think that both the discussions that the city of Livermore has and the discussions the city of Dublin would have would be fruitful, all right, to have some kind of built-in boundary, all right, some kind of agreement that we all could be happy with. That's what I'd like to be talking about.
Thank you. Sean.
Yeah. I would say that for building, we were also promised, we were, if, when we were going to have our, our open land that we were going to have, then we were going to have these huge parks with these big long trails that were going to lead around and around. And I would like, if you're going to put the trails out there, make sure that there is going to be enough money for when they break down. Trails break down all the time. Trees grow up, and the roots go in, and the wheelchair's going to get over the roots. And I like to see things where wheelchairs or other things can charge up their chairs so they can enjoy the thing. Other than that, I don't want to see any growth out there.
Thank you, Sean. The next question, oh, sorry, Shehu, sorry about that. Shehu, sorry.
Anyway, I trust the voters. I do trust the voters, so I would like the voters to be the ones that would decide. We are here to serve, okay? So, and you can balance our growth. I'm sure developers, they have a different interest, which I understand. I really want to do this as a solo. So I know, you know, I was invested in making money. That's it. So developers, they have a different agenda, which I do understand. So yeah, I trust the voters. I think we should act them to the vote.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize again for that. So, Doreen, you'll start with the next question. Explain your position on growth management and smart growth. Do you support infill development, the creation of homes, jobs, and other amenities within our existing cities and towns? What would you do to ensure that residents can afford a place to live within our cities and towns while protecting open space?
Might need a refresher on some of those questions there. What would I do? Okay, so as far as our housing, we have a good selection of housing for all incomes here in Dublin, from low income to medium, high housing, and a variety of tools, whether it's from condos, apartments, single-family homes. We've planned well through that, I believe, with the city and the planning commission together. We've done a good job on the growth that's gone out there. And I support local businesses and infill to make it easier for the residents to walk and enjoy the outdoors and buy their groceries, go to the parks, and do their shopping amenities like they would be rather than getting in a car. So I'm not sure if I answered all three of your questions there, but the, I think we have a good supply here in Dublin, and, you know, plenty to choose from for east and west side as well. And they're all close to the schools, so it's available for kids to walk or bike to the schools as well.
Okay. And then addressing protecting open space.
Absolutely. We have worked on that. We've created many parks in the communities that have been built out there for a variety of reasons. Emerald Glen has, you know, different sports, and we helped to finish the aquatic center there. Sports parks for baseball, soccer, et cetera. All of this brings in tournaments to Dublin, and which then creates retail business for restaurants, shopping, et cetera, out here. Hotel business when we have weekend tournaments. So I think it's all a big bonus and win for the city when we can develop things like that for other cities to come on in and enjoy as well.
Thank you. Kevin.
I moved here when I was 10, and quite frankly, it really bothers me to watch some of the hills that we have go away. I don't like those hills going away and then putting houses there. I think if we're going to have to develop, we need to be smart about our growth, we need to be smart about our building, we need to be strategic about that perspective. I think that one of the great... I think that one of the great things about Dublin is anyone can buy a home there. There are low-income homes here that are actually vacant right now because, a little bit because of the economy. And there's, the homes is far exceed a million dollars in Dublin. So there's a good variety of different homes. There's homes near Transit Center, if you want to do that, or there's single-family dwellings, obviously, as well as high density. So our housing stock is pretty well mixed, which is a good thing for Dublin. I like the open space, but I think we need to match that with, all right, the demands of the environment, demands of the, you know, the community to build and want to live in Dublin. I think Dublin is one of the best kept secrets, one of the jewels of the tri-valley area, if not the San Francisco area, for a variety of reasons. All right, the schools, the schools, the amenities that Dublin has, the parks, and so forth. When it comes to jobs, just last night, the City Council, we talked for over an hour and a half about bringing local jobs and local hiring, all right, to the, to people that live in Dublin. We talked about apprenticeships, all right, to make sure that we have an approved list of vendors, the people we go to, so that local people can get jobs in Dublin. So I think we have a great opportunity. I think that Dublin is on the right track in a lot of different ways, and I think that I'm probably part of that expedition. And that will be...
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Sean.
Yes. As a person who worked in Dublin, I've worked in Dublin for almost twenty-eight years that I've been here. I got my first job at McDonald's when I was twenty-one. I had that job for nine months. Then I went to Roya Vista. I lived in Roya Vista for twenty-five years. I know it's like to have a low-income housing in Dublin. And it's very important that we take care of not only the rich people here in Dublin. We also have to take care of the misfortune people. And I want to see more people to be able to get jobs here in Dublin than they had to drive out of Dublin to go to San Francisco or beyond. I would rather than, than we have. If we're going to build houses, I want to just see us build more houses like I could afford, or someone that is disabled afford, that we all want to work in Dublin. I love this city. I pour out my whole soul to this city. And I want you to understand that when I speak, I speak not for me. I speak for the entire city. And if we are going to have growth of any kind, it is up to the voters. And the voters have the last say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Jaihu.
Yes, I'm for open space. I was a, I do think very, 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 very. Talking about jobs, that's, that's pretty good. We have many ways to pay jobs. In fact, at one point, actually, I have to say something, you know, my company did at one time. So I do know what it takes to pay jobs. We can actually have partnerships between private company and the city. In fact, we have companies that are willing to come in and just join with us. I believe that. That's one. But two, the small businesses. I don't see us doing a whole lot for small businesses. We are helping leader populations, which is good. We're looking at that. You know, we have those, we have targeted all of those things. But I would like for us to do more for smaller, you know, small businesses. Also, once again, that I would like for us to do is that if you look at Dublin, we have just one street connecting east Dublin to west Dublin. We can actually focus on that. I mean, as we grow, I mean, cross the other, as we grow, that street that we look at, it's going to be our destiny. That is a connection. So we should be looking at how we can actually improve on that. Okay, I suppose just let's build, let's build, let's build, let's improve what we have. Then, you know, build up, look out. Thank you.
Okay. Adida.
Yes, I believe the first part of your question dealt with infill. And I believe that Dublin can be successful, just like Mountain View, just like San Jose has been with their infill housing program. And I'm a strong proponent of live, work, play environments. Traditionally planners, city planners, and this is not any kind of diss on the current council or city planning group. But I think the trend was to separate residential areas from office areas, from shopping centers. And I think there's some opportunity for infills to have with work-play. And I would like to see Dublin have some of that, maybe even in particular in the older downtown on the west side. Could you repeat, repeat a second?
Yes. So after infill, would you, what would you do to ensure that residents can afford a place to live within our cities and towns while protecting open space?
Well, one key to that is some better, better jobs. And with my experience in high-tech industry, I'd like to establish more partnerships with Silicon Valley companies since we're on their doorstep. And I think it would alleviate a lot of the commuting that goes from Dublin and San Ramon all the way down to Sunset Court to the, to the Silicon Valley. Additionally, I think we do have already in Dublin a broad spectrum of housing prices. I do think we have low-income housing available, median, single-family homes, high-density homes near the bar at, I've forgotten the name of the development, the Adalonde. And I really applaud the city for the amount of parks and art, public art, that they've done. And I believe in the next two years, that Dublin has set aside thirty-eight million dollars for parks in our town. So, thank you. Right. Thank you.
So Kevin will start with the next question, and that is, the tri-valley has a long history of agriculture, including ranching and viticulture. This has generated local jobs, produced fresh local food, and increased tourism. Yet agriculture faces many challenges, from approachment of development to difficult economics. Would you support zoning or other measures that encourage agriculture in and around Dublin?